We'll call the May 7th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, everybody. On our agenda, we go to public comments next. It's been a while. I think everybody knows the procedure, but it just reminded me of our board operating rules. So I just dug out a few of the board operating rules and I'm gonna read briefly, briefly read through a number of them. The one says, "Board members will listen to comments but will not engage in discussion nor answer specific questions during the public comment section of the agenda." "Board members will listen, learn, understand, not argue, debate, or discuss during the public comment portion." "Board members or county staff may ask questions in order to gain a thorough understanding of the concerns or suggestions or requests. If follow-up to a person's comments is requested or required, I will direct county administrator or county attorney to do so after they've had time to gather the facts, follow up on any legal issues if necessary, and review the matter thoroughly." And this last one, I don't think we need, but I'm gonna read it anyway. "Disruptive or disrespectful behavior will not be allowed. Examples of such behavior include arguments, obscenities, profanities, insults, or attacks against a person in his or her personal capacity, physical violence, or threat thereof; repeating references such as and other comments or conducts that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any board meeting. The chair, and myself, will address such a speaker, give them a warning, and/or use appropriate means to remove such a person from the meeting up to and including the use of law enforcement." I don't think we're gonna need any of those comments, but I think it's a good reminder that we do operate according to our board rules that we adopted in the beginning of the year. With that, I'm opening it up for public comments. If anybody would like to address the board on any subject that is not on the agenda this morning, now's the time. Come up to the podium, introduce yourself. We'll give you about five minutes. Seeing none, we will move on.
Scared him out of it.
Exactly, right. Just what I, I'm such a frightful person.
Tell him they're gonna get arrested.
Yeah, okay. Item number two, our agenda review and adoption.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch. Second by Commissioner Workman. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number three, the approval of the April 16th, 2024 regular session.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Udoman. Second by Commissioner Fahy.
Was that one correction that you found? Was that in the minutes or is that?
That is on further on the agenda when we get back to the ordinance. Yep, second motion. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Community announcements, I'll turn it over to our Administrator Hemsey. You have an announcement.
Yes, sir.
Introduce.
Shelley, come on up. This won't be too embarrassing going.
It's gonna get worse as time goes on.
As you know, Diane Wabi, our longtime executive assistant, is transitioning into her next phases of life. So we did go through a recruitment process and like to welcome and congratulate Shelley Like. I'll let her introduce herself, but one thing I would say is she beat 100 candidate, other candidates. So that alone is pretty impressive. She rose to the top of the pool. So Shelley, if you want to introduce yourself.
Welcome, Shelley.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair. I'm Shelley Like. I live in Waconia, Minnesota. And just a little bit about my past. B.C. before children. I ran Walmart stores. And after that, I taught some college classes, did whatever I had to do to kind of stay in the game while they were little. They have now flown the coop. And so this is my second phase and I'm so excited to be here. So thank you for welcoming me and I hope I can get just a little knowledge from Diane before she leaves because she's amazing. So thank you.
Thank you.
I would also mention, you work for the school district?
I did.
Eastern Carver County School District, so she has some public sector experience too.
I did, I did. I worked for Chan Hessen High School for eight years and it was a wonderful experience. And then I did a quick stint for the CEO at Bachmann's. And now I'm here. So I didn't figure you wanted to know all that. Thank you.
Thank you. We welcome you. As you mentioned, you have big shoes to fill, but life goes on. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other community announcements. Commissioner Workman.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the Carver County deputies and our Sheriff's Department did a great job near my home this weekend, as usual. And the television camera adds 75 pounds in that case. And but all good, all good. What a, what a great bunch of folks. And happy to report everything went well, so.
Glad to see you're safe. Other community announcements. Commissioner Udoman.
Mr. Chair, just echo, you know, 1 out of 100, 1 percenter there, Shelley, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Diane as well. She's not a very public person. She doesn't like the praise, but she's a 1 percenter too. Since I've come in for, just sort of four years ago, I think maybe one time she had something wrong. And I think it was a, she was off on the, she didn't know how much I was gonna talk in that meeting. It might have been Dave's fault, but kudos to Diane. I hope she enjoys her retirement. Well deserved. She kept us in line for a lot of years and did a lot of stuff behind the scenes that you don't always get to see. So good, good for her. I do have a number of announcements, so bear with me. Had a chance to be at the groundbreaking of the Loop on Sunday. The Loop was formerly known as the Par 30, just outside of Hazeltine. It's an inclusive golf course. And I think Carver County has elevated the space of inclusiveness in a lot of different ways. I point to Waconia and their inclusive playground that's very heavily used. I talked about the Loop and the person that kicked it off was a disabled person. It was pretty cool to grab the video of somebody hitting off of a golf cart. And I've had conversations with the Polar Plunge to try and keep some of those Polar Plunge dollars locally to invest in more inclusive items. We may have opportunity with, as like Waconia Regional develops. We'll certainly have opportunity in City of Chaska as they look at their ballparks.
You want to explain to people how is the Loop different from other golf courses such as Hazeltine and the Par, whatever?
The Loop was designed to be for everybody of all abilities. And so whether you're Dave Ladner, I see you here, who's a scratch golfer, or, or somebody that has physical disabilities, you can play that course. And it was designed to have the contours so that you can get to that, the tee and do well. It was a long time coming, took a lot of fundraising, but I think the community stepped up from a lot of organizations. And so the clubhouse is beautiful, the course is beautiful, get out and play it. Christmas in May, I don't know how many years row we've had a chance to do that. I know a number of people in the room have participated with it. It's Chaska's opportunity to help people that have places of need. Either they're elderly and they simply can't do the work or they're in financial need. And so I know I saw Lisa out and about and another number of other people trimming trees, painting houses. The weather wasn't great to start with. They were putting in doors. And Dave Bacorny, Bob Repke, and others have helped get that off the ground and keep it sustaining for a long period of time. I know Greg Boe, you've been active in that as well. Had a chance to go to Southwest Christian. Sometimes we forget about the education experiences that are in our county to see Beauty and the Beast, which was super cool. Had a chance to talk to their head of schools, Dan Beckering. A lot of our conversations around Bavaria 10 and 41. But also we reminded of the robust amount of education that's in our communities. And excellent, which leads me into my next point. Congratulations to Erin Rathke. She's our new superintendent for District 112. District 112 represents about 60% of the school age kids in Carver County. And I think there was 30 candidates. She was a finalist and then they ended up selecting Erin Rathke. So I think it's our opportunity and obligation as a community to support her and see to her that she can be successful. I know she's out and about meeting with community members to find out what's important for them. Had a chance to go to the Southwest Chamber First Responders Luncheon. I think there was another commissioner or two that was there as well. Wonderful event by Stephen Curtis. There was a video that featured our own sheriff. Pat Bari was in that video and one of our own, Dylan West, sheriff deputies, was honored with a lifesaving award. It was moving and touching and fun to be part of. I'm looking at Heather Goodwin. We had a chance to be with Project Linkage, which is a collaboration with a number of the not-for-profits in our community and others to talk about impact statements. As we, as a county, help fund some of these local not-for-profits. The bar has increased because there's so many unfunded state mandates. We'll hear a lot from you guys today on the realm of mental health and occupational health and others. But we just really need to raise the bar in a number of ways because there's not enough money to go around. And so applaud Heather's efforts to articulate what it looks like to have a 10, 15-minute impact statement annually from our partners. Went a chance to be at Cinco de Mayo with many. And I bring Cinco de Mayo up because Pat Steg, our own, was there to present about public health, which is fantastic. Our own Erica Kennedy was there to receive an award. And it was a chance for Julie Jankie also to be acknowledged. So nice job with the public health and their update. I had a chance to be at La Academia for Junior Achievement. They have something called Biz Town where they bring in a number of elected officials. I've been doing it, I think, for three years and we interview the kids. There's fifth graders that come through. I think there was probably 100 of them. And to see the future and what that looks like was super cool to be part of. And the answers that they have, sometimes they're spot on. Sometimes it's like, what's in that little brain? But to cultivate it. And at the end of Business Town, they pick a CEO, they pick a president, they pick a mayor, and then they go on for a full day experience for Biz Town. So thanks for inviting me to be part of that. And then finally, I'm really looking forward to the conversation today about mental wellness. I'm a softball coach and one of the things that I talk about with the kids is resilience. And I'm encouraged all the preventive, proactive, upstream things that our own county is doing. And sometimes those don't see the light of day. And so just wanted to call that out when we've got a number of youth softball leagues going on, other things going on. What we're doing at the county is happening and sometimes people don't even realize it's going. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Lynch, anything to add up in Watertown these days?
Well, I heard that, I always thought scratch golfing was bad because I've been referred to as a scratch golfer because it's like we have five for our foursome, Scratch Lynch. So I.
It's nice to be included. Commissioner Fahy.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I have a few items. And as we know, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. While mental health is important to address year-round, Mental Health Awareness Month provides a dedicated time for people, organizations, and communities to join their voices to broadcast the message that mental health matters. Nearly one in five Americans live with a mental illness. Unfortunately, people may delay seeking treatment or support because of the stigma associated with mental illness. However, getting treatment sooner can support improved health outcomes during challenging times. Taking care of both your physical and mental health is imperative. And we'll learn more later in the meeting about mental health. Also, it is poppy season. The end of April, in the month of May, you'll begin to see one of the VFWs, Exhillery, the Women of N.Y.A. They'll be out and about giving away red poppies.
Such as this?
Yes, Mr. Chair. For you to wear proudly to show your patriotism. They do not sell the poppies, although donations are welcome. All donations received will be used to support veterans in our community and surrounding area.
Hate to put you on the spot, but do you know where the red poppy comes from?
Heard the story, but tell us.
Well, I was, World War I, Field of Flanders, the poppies. And I don't want to go into it. That was your community announcement, so.
Exciting news in the city of Carver. They're creating a new Lions Park Court project. The city council approved a bid for the new play courts in Lions Park. The construction of the new court services is expected to start in early June. The new layout will have play options for tennis, pickleball, and basketball. Also, Norway Young America Small Business Seminar is tomorrow. It's in recognition of Small Business Week. The N.Y.A. Economic Development Commission and the N.Y.A. Chamber are hosting a seminar tomorrow, Wednesday, May 8th. It's called Branding, Marketing, Social Media: What's the Fuss Seminar. They'll address questions around business, mission, goals, and target markets. So if you'd like to attend that event, it's from 5:30 to 7:30. You can RSVP to the economic development at the city of N.Y.A. Also, on May 9th, the American Red Cross Blood Mobile is gonna be in Cologne at the Cologne Community Center from 1:00 to 7:00. You can call Karen Shanebauer. Her number is 952-466-5528 for details. But please, if you have the opportunity, give out and get out and give some blood. I also was able to attend the Cinco de Mayo event last week, hosted by the Chaska Rotary, just a great event. I've been at that event now for a few years. Pat Steg, Carver County employee, presented just a great presentation. And just a thank you to Pat. The county staff was also there and also the Chaska Rotary. Last week, I was in St. Paul at Capitol Hill and we were pushing for a bonding bill with our legislature. So if you have any ways or means to reach out to your legislatures, we definitely recommend it as we push forward for the bonding bill. And then the last thing, Mr. Chair, just a congratulations to the Cologne Lions for their 50th anniversary event. Was out at that event last week also.
There's always a lot to do. And as Chair, if I get the last say, you've taken up quite a bit of what I was gonna say. Christmas in May, obviously always a great thing. Like I was mentioning, the weather was a little bit dreary to start with, but it was a tremendous turnout. And they met at St. John's for breakfast. And I don't know if people like to just come for the breakfast because that's worth, it's worth it right there. But there was a great turnout. They did a lot of good things in the city of Chaska. Kudos to that event. May, the month of May, is Foster Appreciation Month, Foster Care Appreciation Month. We have a lot of foster families in Carver County. I wish we could say that we don't need them, but obviously the need is there. And thank all those who give up their time and energy to foster not only a young child, but also adult who needs that training and leadership. And the last thing I just mentioned is tomorrow, the 8th, from 4:00 to 8:00, Taste of Chaska is being held down at the Fireman's Park. So if you have, if you're hungry like most of us are, don't hesitate. Some of us don't like to try things that we're not used to, but most people do. So stop down, Fireman's Park, Taste of Chaska. With that, we'll move on to item number five on our agenda is the consent agenda. This morning, we have 20-some issues, 20-some items. I'll just briefly summarize some of them. We have a professional service agreement. We have traffic safety grant resolution, approval of a contract for a final payment for pavement marking, or a contract for replacement of a roof, federal agreement for 212 project, special use permit for the Waconia food shelf, a contract for 42nd Street Bridge, data practicing guidelines we're approving, professional service agreement for erosion control. We have joint powers for 42nd Street Bridge. We have a final payment for Highway 50 project. We have a contract for purchasing wetland credits. We have approval of a contract for advantage coating, a resolution for drainage easements. We have right-of-way for 41 Highway 10 project. St. Peter's Lutheran Church has a special event coming up. Professional service agreement for 212 project. A support for Highway 5 grant application, approval with another contract for spiral, request for wooded lots, Highway 5 safety projects, another grant application for Highway 5, eminent domain for Highway 4110, professional services for Highway 5 final design, Office of Justice grant, and then a grant from the Minnesota Department of Health, and finally, our Health and Human Service and Commissioner warrants. With that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? So moved. Second, motion by Commissioner Udoman, second by Commissioner Lynch. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Udoman.
I just had one, 5:19, it always, I like to say this. Highway 5 is a state highway. And sometimes people ask the question is, why are we doing it? Because we're the county, right? Why doesn't the state pay for their own stuff? The honest to God reality is if we don't step in with our resources, it won't get done. We're not even on the, what is it, Tom? We're not even on the radar.
20-year plan.
The 20-year plan. And so when I came in, I think it was less than 20% funded. Now it's over 80% funded. If we get these fundings, it'll put us where we need to go. And we had a conversation this morning on legislative priorities. London was on there, 82nd Street shovel in the ground should happen in 2025. We need to have that done to be a relief valve. A lot of that's good work that was started by Greg Boe when he was at the State House and then the connection to Bavaria and Highway 5. So significant things happening and then that opens up four-way, all the way out to the west. It's a big building block and it's significant as it comes to our community. So I just wanted to call out that 5:19 is hard, hard work and it's necessary work because the state's not gonna fund the whole thing.
It's good that you bring recognition to that because it's, it's a number of things that this board has done in the past. We've had 101, which was a state highway. We, if it wasn't for the county's help, the bridge and the, their upgrade of 101 wouldn't have happened. 212, prime example. It would have never got as far as, it'd probably still be in Eden Prairie if the county board hadn't stepped up. And now Highway 5. So slowly but surely, the county is doing and encouraging and with the support of the state, getting our state highway system up to par. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? See, we have a motion and second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to item 6.1, Cannabis Public Use Ordinance. We have a public hearing. So in order to have a public hearing, we have to motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Udoman, second by Commissioner Lynch to open the public hearing. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We're now in the public hearing. That gives us to Jennifer Tishy from the county, county, Attorney's Office. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm gonna skip ahead. I've got my slides a little out of order here. So just to give you some background, you all know, we were here on, or the law went into effect, the Minnesota Adult Use Cannabis Law, on August 1st of 2023. We had a work session before you on the 22nd of August where we talked about a number of items, licensing, zoning, public use, criminal implications with the new law. We came back again for another work session on February 27th. That board work session was primarily focused on this use in public spaces and county parks and trails. The state statute does not address any regulation of public use. Most jurisdictions that I'm aware of, cities and counties alike, have adopted public use ordinances. We spoke to you on the 27th with a few options, they, you know, comparing what other counties are doing. The County's Attorneys Association and the sheriffs put out a model policy. So we largely worked off of that. We published the notices as required by the park statutes and state statute for adoption of ordinances. So those were published on April 11th, 18th, and 25th in the Herald, the Chan Villager, and the Patriot.
The Herald?
The Chaski Herald.
It don't exist anymore.
Yeah, right. So just a quick, again, to kind of go over what we talked about. The law itself already does prohibit the use of cannabis while driving a vehicle, certain public schools, prisons, anywhere tobacco smoking under the Clean Indoor Air Act, and anywhere where the smoke could be inhaled by a minor. So those were already in place by the statute. What we added through the ordinance is prohibiting the use in any county-owned or leased property. We are prohibiting it in parks, beach, trails. That includes parking lots, in your motor vehicle, in the parking lot, at the park facilities. The trails would include our Regional Rail Authority trails as well. It prohibits, prohibits it on public streets and sidewalks and any other areas open to the public, which this is sort of already in the statute, but it's consistent with the Clean Indoor Air Act. And we talked about this at our work session, you know, what, to what extent we were going to include it. And the direction from the board was to be pretty comprehensive about what we regulated. And so it's, it's smoking, it's vaping, and it's the edibles as well. By law, by the statute, there are some places where we were not allowed to restrict it. It's allowed in people's private residences or their yard. Private property not accessible to the public unless the owner prohibits it. And then there's a process where an event could be licensed for onsite consumption and we would need to allow for that if someone has granted that event license. There was some discussion at our work session about the jurisdiction and kind of what the ordinance will cover. This ordinance is drafted to cover the entire county at this point. But there is a provision in there that allows a local jurisdiction, a township or a city, if they want to adopt their own ordinance, that they could preempt the county ordinance. They could be either more or less restrictive than our county ordinance. And the only exception I'll note to that is any county-owned property. Again, if there's a park that's located within a municipal jurisdiction that adopts its own ordinance, our county park ordinance would, would still trump the local in that case. The park ordinance, so before you today, are two ordinances. One standalone public use ordinance. The park ordinance was already in existence. We've just had to make some amendments to it. The current ordinance does already prohibit smoking and tobacco use, including vaping and inhalation, but it was limited to the definition to tobacco. So the revisions to the park ordinance include some just general cleanup. As long as we were going in there to make changes consistent with the cannabis law, we did some standardization of terms for what park means, defining persons, expanded, as I said, the definition of smoke or smoking to include those cannabis products, not just the tobacco plant products. And it, consistent with the countywide ordinance, just defines use to include ingest, inhale, consume, again, those edibles. So it's unlawful to smoke or use the flower products edible, as I said, applies. This is kind of repetitive, parks, trails, beaches. And again, that notation that it does include, the state law doesn't allow you to drive while consuming or inhaling. But this would include, you can't be sitting in the park, parking lot in your car using. That would also be a violation in our ordinance. And that's all I've got. I, I'm here, Marty Walsh from Parks, and Assistant County Attorney Lynn Walters is here. If there are any questions.
Questions first from the board. Commissioner Fahy.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Jennifer, has there been any other pushback from ordinances that have been in place that you know of, like at other cities or other counties?
I have not heard any. I reached out in kind of trying to pull some comparison ordinances. I spoke to a handful of assistant county attorneys who had already adopted it and to kind of ask why they chose one path versus another. And none of them have had, at that time, any way, any concerns by their jurisdictions, no.
And since it's all new and new ordinances and the new law, it's, I'm definitely in support of seeing it stricter and so, thank you, good job.
Any other question? Commissioner Lynch.
Has there been any, we had, obviously we've talked about this several times. Is there been any way of testing for THC to tell if someone's actually high or not? Has there been any new, now there has, looking back at the sheriff.
Yeah, I'm looking at the sheriff.
We can do it with the test. He's shaking his head, but I can't hear that. Sheriff, you wanna come up there and help us out?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lynch, there, to my knowledge, they're still evaluating for driving purposes, some field testing sorts of scenarios. We have sent a couple of additional employees, deputies, to drug rec, to become drug recognition experts, which is basically a series of physical, you know, there's an exam piece and then some field coordination exercises to try to determine the extent of their intoxication. And part of that does allow them to break out between being high on methamphetamine versus marijuana versus some other controlled substances. So we're trying to be reasonably prepared to further moderate public anyway, be after that.
Thank you for being on top of all this. Any speculation about why it should be illegal for people in prisons, but it's legal for the general public?
I cannot speculate about why some people make the decisions they do.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions, comments? Let the board think a little bit. This is a public hearing. It's open to the public. Anybody from the public have any questions, thoughts, concerns? Please come up to the mic, introduce yourself.
Okay, I hadn't planned on doing this.
You don't have to. This is a public hearing.
Yeah, my name is David Ladner. I'm a longtime resident of Chaska. I think our daughters graduated from my school together. I think our daughters graduated from my school together. I know Matt. So I'm one of the founders of a company called Crooked Beverage. And so when I saw what you define as cannabis, it was edibles, um, vaping and smoking. We make a beverage and this beverage that we make is a hemp infused beverage, totally legal under the farm bill. So it's federally legal. And so when you say that you're restricting it in bars and restaurants, this is a beverage that certain bars and restaurants actually in Carver County sell today. So I think you might want to take a look at maybe defining more in terms of what can be consumed in a bar and a restaurant. Because generally speaking, this, this category of hemp derived beverages has actually nationally surpassed craft beers. And to lend credibility, yeah, I know, I know. And, and to lend credibility to, to this adult beverage, if you will. Total Wine carries it. MGM carries it. Top Ten Liquors carries it. We're in actually six different states across the country in total wine stores. So from a legality standpoint, it is a hundred percent federally legal. So I think it's just important that if somebody is consuming a beverage in a Carver County bar where it's federally legal, we don't want to make it illegal for that, that bar or restaurant or person to consume inside of that bar or in a public park too.
I'll give Jennifer a little time to think about a response. But my question to you is, uh, this is a field that I'm not familiar with. This beverage, am I gonna get high by consuming it?
Um, potentially.
Oh, really?
And, and that's the thing about the whole testing thing. Cannabis reacts differently with every human being, very similar to alcohol, right? So, so there really is no testing. You can potentially get high. It's kind of like, you take enough Tylenol, you can overdose on Tylenol, right? So the answer, the short answer is yes. But it's unlike, maybe in my opinion anyway, unlike smoking marijuana.
And then, uh, as cheap as I am, uh, does this beverage cost more than a craft beer or is it similar?
It's on par.
Okay, yeah, yeah. You're not the one on testimony right here, but any questions for Mr. Ladner? Uh, Commissioner Workman?
Um, right, so I'm, I'm where, where from our, our legal experts does that, uh, product sit in our ordinance?
Jennifer?
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Workman. I have to probably look at it a little bit closer. I, I'm, I'm aware of the product, but not enough to know exactly. I mean, if you look, our ordinance on, well, page maybe eighty-four, but defines a lower potency hemp edible consumed by, as a beverage, but then goes into specific milligrams and is it delta nine? Is it, you know, I, it, that's kind of beyond my full understanding. So I'll look at that and make sure if, if it's our intention or the county board's intention to not, um, prohibit those kind of beverages, um, in public restaurants in Carver County, I'll have to make sure, compare that against what's in those beverages and make sure it's not excluded based on our ordinance. Um, again, this language of defining what a cannabis product is and what hemp is and hemp derived products, uh, the, this is modeled after the model ordinance. I don't know if other, other jurisdictions did not change those definitions generally. So I don't know if other counties, that's something I can follow up and find out. You know, is, did this, the scope of this regulation impact those otherwise federally lawful THC beverages? But I, I, I'm guessing that they do not, that whoever was bright enough to develop the model policy knew that they couldn't totally regulate those out, but I'll ver, I'll make sure that that's the case.
Commissioner Workman?
Well, our, our, we're not finalizing this today.
That's what I was wondering. Are you comfortable that we could pass this? Or do you want to hold the passage of this ordinance till a future date to look into that?
Um, that is a good question.
May I interje, if you pass it today, then certain bars and restaurants that are actually selling this product and making money and serving their customers will be deprived of that right to do so, correct?
Well, if it's, I, my, I don't think that it's regulated out by the language in the ordinance.
And for the record, it is hemp derived.
Right.
So we are federally legal.
Mr. Chair? If you're not comfortable with the ordinance, I wouldn't pass it. I would, uh, table it for another meeting. Allow the county attorney's office a little bit of time to do some research and we can come back to. I don't think this is that time sensitive, correct?
It isn't. I think, um, parks had some interest in getting it, you know, as early as on and in the park season. But, um, I think, you know, we can delay it one meeting, I think.
So I think if everybody's comfortable, we'll table it, but let's continue with the input from the public. This is a great, uh, idea to bring up.
Yeah, yeah. One other comment. So, so we've taken a little bit different approach to the market. We actually make three different dosages. So we do a three milligram, a five milligram and a ten milligram in a can. And the whole reason for that, the reason we did the very low dose, the three milligram, and, and let me back up.
Please.
A lot of, a lot of the reason that, that this became legal, there are a lot of people that want to quit drinking, cut back their drinking of alcohol. And it's, it's a much safer product than alcohol is and, and it's healthier for you. Don't roll your eyes up there, okay? Because this, I mean, this is scientifically proven. So what we decided was, um, to be safe, um, we're gonna make a very low dose product, this three milligram product, so that bars and restaurants can serve it without potentially any risk, if you will, of people driving intoxicated. So you might want to take that into account when you're thinking through this. Well, maybe bars and restaurants can only sell three and five milligram cans, not the, you know, high dose ten milligram can of stuff. The other thing that I will add, and then if you have other, other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If you would like free samples, raise your hand.
Depends upon the val, the value. Yeah. Depending upon the value, we're probably not allowed to take free samples.
I, I, I know, I'm just kidding.
Thank goodness for the gift laws.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I was, I might have been in a couple of breweries this weekend. Are your products at Fulton or anywhere or?
Fulton makes their own, actually.
Okay.
Every, every, every brewery pretty much in Minnesota. Minnesota has become the poster child, if you will, for these hemp derived THC beverages. And part of the reason for that is we created some pretty good open access laws for this. And now people are actually coming to us and asking us for direction and guidance on, like Kentucky, for example. Um, you know, they just approved it. So they're coming to us and maybe I shouldn't say this in a room full of conservatives, but my partner in this.
There's nothing wrong with conservatives.
Okay, I never said that. I'm a conservative myself. My, my partner in this is a guy named Ryan Winkler. Ryan was the House Majority Leader who actually got the cannabis bill passed. So everything that we do is one hundred percent by the book and legal. And in fact, um, I think Ryan is also working with Klobuchar's office, um, to actually testify in front of, um, the, both the Senate and the House, um, as they start, uh, exploring renewing the farm bill, um, as we know it today.
Farming has changed over the years.
It's a cash crop.
Exactly. Well, other questions?
Well, so I just, um, you know, people are going to do what they're gonna do. So this gentleman is running a legitimate business and following all the laws and rules and, and establishments. So when you, but when you get away from that, and so we could, we could harm him while we're trying to protect what's going on in our parks. And I can tell you, other than me sitting down at Middelwasta Beach with my thirteen foot Turkish water hookah, nobody's gonna know I'm eating an edible or drinking a can of fun water. Healthy. Um, a, and so, I, you know, I think we could spend all day chasing this around, but then it does come down to the legitimate businesses and, because w, we're not gonna stop people from, the, the Minnesota sort of passed laws to make legal what people were kind of already doing in the shadows. So, um, the former governor of the state said, just, why don't we just, just keep buying it on the corner like, uh, you always have. And so, so I'm trying to bring it down a little bit. I mean, we don't really control the city, so how this is sold in vape and e-cig shops, et cetera, is not really under our purview unless it's out, right?
Right, yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Workman, I think we're just government, are looking to regulate the use in our public spaces. It, I, it's not intended. I mean, the prohibited act section talks about, you know, any place that's an establishment that's licensed to, for the consumption of this adult use, uh, cannabis flower or products would continue to be able to do that. This, this ordinance isn't going to, um, take away the, the bars and the breweries and the, the license holders who have the authority right now to sell those products. This is, again, it's our parks, it's, you know, the streets and sidewalks and at the beach, here at the, in the government center, in the courthouse, you know, things like that. So I don't think that anything in here would impact, um, it, it might impact the private sales and the people who want to take, you know, that ten milligram can and go hang out at the beach for the day. That, that would be restricted in this ordinance.
Commissioner Workman?
Mr. Chair, when this first started, I mean, it's a twenty-three pages worth of stuff and it's an evolution because we don't know. But we do have the benefit of how many states, Dave, that have already kind of gone this path?
Uh, at least thirty or forty.
Yep, and it's good to have an expert. And so I've always said, we get as close as clear as possible and as close to enforceable as possible. Because I don't want sheriff's deputies showing up and not knowing what to do. The honest to God reality is if somebody brings, you know, a six pack of your product or somebody else's and they're hanging out at the beach, they're minding their Ps and Qs, nobody's gonna do anything, right? Um, but, um, my question comes in is, you talked about the bar. Is it the person's responsibility that's ordering the drinks? Is it the bar's responsibility if they spill over? Because impairment can come in a lot of different ways. It can be too tired. It can be alcohol related, too drunk. And it can be, you know, have seven of those ten milligram buddies and I'm sure they're gonna set you over the top. That's my, that's my issue. Fourth of July, people roll at Lake Waconia Regional. They're having these drinks and they get in a car and where do they go next? And so I don't, I don't know how that goes. I also want to say that I know a number of people use this for pain. It's not intoxication level. It's not, you know, equivalent for, for alcohol. It's, it's pain related. And then the can base, I know that state of Minnesota might be the only one that still sells three two beer. And I think that they've had, so, so you talk about your three milligram and I, I've not touched any of it. But I'm guessing the three two is equivalent of, the, your three milligram is equivalent to a three two, that eventually there's not going to be the lowest common denominator. There's gonna be the standard that the consumer demands, and I'm guessing it's probably five or higher.
Right, yeah, that's, that's actually a good assumption. I will add, uh, to the sheriff, impairment is impairment, right? And you can test, you can do certain things to test for impairment. And, and, and so that doesn't really change, all right? You can be impaired by drinking too much cough syrup, you know, and driving down the road. So, um, and again, I want to be very clear, I'm not up here just to defend my company. Um, there are, there are Carver County businesses that actually sell this product. And you'd be taking away a revenue stream from them. And, and, and by businesses, I mean legitimate restaurants and bars that have been around for a long time.
And again, I think, I, I, I don't think that's the intent of the ordinance. I'll make sure that the language doesn't do that. They, they are, those establishments, we don't regulate those. We're not, we don't license them. The state licensed them with food and beverage licenses. And if their license includes the sale of cannabis derived beverages, that, this ordinance would not touch that.
And that's our intention to get the ordinance?
That's the intention and that's, we'll make sure that that language is clear in here.
Commissioner Fahy?
Mr. Chair and Jennifer also on page eighty-four of our packet. And to your point, Dave, it talks about hemp derived consumer products and then the low potency hemp edible. And we have those in two separate categories now, is do we need to understand that better? Is there, when you make those general terms, are we trying to put it in too big of a bucket, for example?
Personally, um, that's a good question. We don't deal in edibles at our company. I just think it might be hard to prove whether somebody is consuming an edible unless they're actually, you know, somebody watches them in a public park, you know, popping these edibles. So, um, I think they're two distinctly separate categories, if that's your question.
I just want to understand and get the clarification.
Jennifer, do you understand the question that Mr. Fahy's kind of addressing? Are we talking about two different issues? Are they properly addressed in the ordinance that's?
I think these terms on, these definitions on eighty-four of our packet are taken directly from the state statute. You know, the sta, the state has, and I'm not enough of an expert in the products to say why it's divided up that way. But yes, it looks like, you know, what are products? What's a flower? What's hemp? What's low potency hemp? Um, those are just ripped straight from the statute and.
Other concerns by the board? Commissioner Lynch?
Uh, Dave, question, uh, now you mentioned, um, this is not, uh, you said it's three, five milliliters. And that's of what, THC?
Of THC, correct.
And that's derived from hemp and not from?
Hemp derived delta nine THC.
Okay.
Is there a delta eight or a delta ten?
There, there are delta eights and delta tens.
Really?
Don't ask me to talk about the differences other than the delta nine is legal under the federal farm bill.
On the federal farm bill, all right. Um, frankly, I didn't know that your product was, uh, available. And so it's legal in, uh, and you can buy it in bars and restaurants and, okay. And no, I don't want to have a free sample because I have a commercial driver's license. And though it's legal in Minnesota, it is not legal for, uh.
Agreed, yes, yeah.
Good point. I mean, we're advertising a business and yet we're clarifying to the general public that, uh, if you have certain licenses, we can't do it, period.
Commissioner Lynch, we, we actually do a number of taste, so we're in over three hundred locations here. We're in seven states. We actually do like tasting, samplings and liquor stores. And one of the first things we do is tell people there is THC in here. And then we'll also say, do you have a, do you have a CDL? Because try, I mean, I, I, I came from the transportation space, so I know the importance of the CDL and the testing that you guys have to go through for that. So, um, we are aware of it and we try to make sure that anybody that shouldn't be drinking it doesn't drink it.
I'm, I'm not the only one. There's four of us up here who have CDL, so.
Well, you four don't get samples.
Thank you. Uh, this is still a public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Ladner.
And, and thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate the time.
Any other, uh, public input at this point? Sounds like the general consensus is we'll probably want to table this. Uh, so we might get another chance to put input at another time, but last chance at this point?
Would you close the public hearing?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
No, we wouldn't close it.
Yeah.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hems.
Commissioner Workman, I'd recommend you continue the public hearing to a date certain.
A date certain or date uncertain?
A date certain.
Okay, you, you got something to pick up?
Uh, pick a date, uh, pick a board date. Then the public would know.
How much time do you need, Jennifer?
Jennifer question.
Uh, well, I think we can answer it before the next board meeting, whatever the next one is.
So then the next board meeting?
That's when I'll go on vacation.
May twenty one? Yeah, we might have a board member missing, but, uh, do we? Somebody missing?
Next week?
Twenty first?
Okay.
Perhaps we could have this thirteen foot hookah pipe sit in for him. Whatever that is.
Visualize.
I think we will, is there a motion to table? We'll continue the public hearing?
We'll move to table.
Okay.
Continue.
I clarify. Continue would be the.
Continue the public hearing.
I'm confused, Shelley. She's brand new.
To the twenty first.
Continue.
Continue the public hearing till the twenty first.
I would second.
That was a motion by Commissioner Workman. Seconded by Commissioner Lynch. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of, uh, continuing this till the twenty first, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, there was a turn in the road that I did not see coming, so, uh, that's what input is for. Thank you very much. That brings us to item six point two, uh, mental health overview and resolution. Brings, brought to us by Richard, Dr. Richard Scott, Deputy Division Director. Welcome, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Commissioner DeGler, Commissioners and staff. Appreciate this opportunity to have a, to introduce a couple of my colleagues who'll be talking about mental health. I think we all can appreciate that mental health is all of our concerns, both that we are all affected by people who may have a mental health challenge or a mental illness challenge. And we all can play a critical role in addressing that and improving that. What I'm delighted about, especially with my public health hat, uh, that we're gonna be focusing more on the prevention of mental health challenges today, um, even though understanding that there's a continuum of care and we provide resources pretty much in that entire continuum of care. So I'm. So I'm honored again to present two of my colleagues, Stephanie Scum, uh, Stephanie Combe, who has her master's in social work and is a licensed social worker, she serves as our Behavioral Health Clinical Services Manager, and also, uh, another colleague, Michelle Sellinger, we call her Shelley, uh, with a master's of social work, also licensed a social worker too, and she is the manager of our Child and Family Services Man, Manager. So without further ado, I'd like to have them come up to do the presentation, and I'll be concluding at the end to ask the board to adopt a proclamation for having May as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Welcome, Stephanie and Shelley.
Good morning, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here today, and, um, as Dr. Scott said, I'm Stephanie Combe, I'm the Behavioral Health Clinical Services Manager here for Carver County. So, one of the things that, um, we were asked to talk a little bit about today was prevention, and we want to make sure that we talk about prevention from a pretty broad lens, um, and from the mental health lens. As we go throughout, wherever we could, we try to, uh, put services that Carver County is directly providing in green and italicized, just for your kind of visual cues on some of those things, and of course, we'll, um, be happy to answer.
Hate to interrupt, so if Carver County isn't directly, uh, providing these services, where can we get help?
If that's a question you have to ask at some point, yes, we would be happy to entertain that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, so when we, uh, when you drove here today, um, we, okay, um, when you drove here today, um, you, most of you rode in a car or a truck, or a commercial, um, vehicle, maybe? And when we think about preventing, um, I like to use the example of a car, um, because when you drove your car today, um, your prevention efforts included driving carefully, following the rules of the road, um, however, you couldn't control anybody else on the road, you couldn't control whether the other drivers on the road followed the rules of the road. So in addition to, um, you know, getting in your car, you also added in secondary and tertiary prevention steps. When you purchased your car, you bought one that had extra safety features such as airbags to help protect you in a crash, and then you took the step of fastening your seatbelt, I trust, this morning. Um, you had no intention of getting into a car accident, but if it was going to happen, you wanted to be as safe as possible, and you certainly, if you had family members in your car, would want your family members to be safe as well. We apply that same thinking in prevention and mental health. We will work to prevent, uh, mental health concerns to the extent that we can, and then when they can't be prevented, um, our goal is to lessen the impact of those mental health issues. So, um, kind of going into, uh, this is, this is a, um, just a, a kind of very brief overview of what we're going to talk about today. Many of our, uh, many of us are fortunate to have the opportunity to be parents. As we raise our children, we do everything we know to help them grow up healthy emotionally and physically, and yet if your child happens to have been impacted by certain genetic and environmental factors, they can still end up with mental health illness. When that occurs, our focus becomes helping our youth live their best lives with their mental illness and preventing the negative outcomes that can occur when their illness goes untreated and they are not given the tools to manage their illness. People are living full, happy, and productive lives while managing their mental illness, and if there's nothing else that you remember from that, from my statements today, I hope you remember that, and I hope our community remembers that. This diagram is just a framework of some examples that we'll share today, it is by no means all-encompassing, and we hope it helps to provide some brief examples of prevention across the mental health spectrum. So last year, when I was in front of you, um, I was asked to share a little bit about our, um, continuum of care. I'm only bringing this back as a reminder, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, but you will see, and, and I wasn't able to change this coloring on this one, but all of the services that Carver County currently provides are in bold, and it is not a exhaustive list, and please understand that there are many layers of services under each of those titles. In 2023, our, uh, Behavioral Health Clinic area served 3,170 clients. So we are working actively with our, um, residents of Carver County and those who bring their health concerns to us. So kind of jumping into the examples of innovation in the, in Carver County, this is just, again, a smattering of some things that we are doing, uh, you'll see all the green, and, you know, some of you might say, well, I don't get how that is, or I don't get how that might be prevention. I'm happy to try and answer that, but I was hoping to be really targeted on some key examples of coordinated services today. Carver County is the host of the, what is known as the Inter Services, Inter-Agency Services Collaborative, which is focused on children and, uh, who have, who are at risk for mental health concerns. It's made up of school districts, children's mental health, public health, corrections, community action, and Head Start. This year, we had the very fortunate opportunity to have some extra funding that we needed to spend down in our, in our, um, ISC fund.
Don't say that too loud.
Okay, yep. It, it's a very specific fund that comes through our local collaborative time studies, um, dollars, and so we have to be very careful and thoughtful in how we spend that money. So with that opportunity, though, what, what the, um, Inter-Agency Services Collaborative decided to do was to have, create some mini-grants, just some little extra things that, that could benefit the school districts in their efforts towards mental health prevention. And I want to give you a couple of examples, just because I think they're kind of cool and they wouldn't have been possible without us all coming together for this resource. So one, uh, um, district decided to create two work nooks. Um, so, we often have kids who have sensory-related issues, which is a newer thing in, in the last 20 years that we talk about, but what happens is that they get so overwhelmed by their environment that they often act out to get out. So by, by providing that sensory relief space, it helps them to stay in the classroom, stay calm, and learn to manage their sensory needs. And so it's a wonderful opportunity. Carver County's not providing that service, but through this mini-grant that we did, we're going to help the schools provide that and do a prevention effort in those schools. Uh, another district purchased the Boomerang Project Training and implement, and plans to implement two web-based programs called Where Everybody Belongs and The Link Crew to support middle school and incoming ninth graders. We know from Public Health Awareness that, uh, children coming out of the, the pandemic have really struck, struggled with kind of reconnecting and feeling part of the community. We also hear a lot about the impact of, uh, social media and certainly cell phones in the schools. So these are two things that would be just helpful to the, to the youth in intentionally helping them connect and develop relational skills. And then, 112 requested, District 112 requested funds for their camp emoji, which is a, a social-emotional learning camp facilitated through Relate Counseling Center, um, for K-5, K to 5th grades, and they, they run a, a complement to our summer prep adventure program. And again, these are kids who might not have another camp experience, and they're working intentionally on not only interpersonal skills but also self-management skills. And then finally, last month, you heard from Jen Romero on her team's work with house, the Housing Helpline and Homeless Outreach, and certainly while not all are homeless, not all homeless have mental illness, those with untreated mental illness are risk, higher risk of homelessness, which leads to worse outcomes for their health. I'm going to turn it over to Shelley.
Hey.
Welcome, Shelley.
Thank you, Chair, um, Mr. Chair. So I would like to start by talking about some of the examples and other innovations we have in Carver, but first, I want to say that prevention begins before birth, and I think most people don't really realize that, but, um, and it continues then throughout childhood, and where things cross over from prevention to more active mental health interventions can be a bit fuzzy sometimes because the continuum is so broad. So, um, as you can see from your screen, everything in green is something that we're already providing. Everyone gets those services, not just people at risk. Um, the, except for probably the bottom two, the ages and stages questionnaire and the pediatric screening checklist are actually screening documents that we use with every family that enters the child protection system as well as a placement. So we are always screening for, um, mental health concerns. So when we say prevention begins early, it means we must even prepare for parenthood by being, uh, emotionally mature, having interpersonal and community supports, and good physical healthcare, so everything we want for a healthy baby.
So, kind of going back into the, so you'll see, we're kind of going to find a little bit of a life cycle here as we go through today, but, so social-emotional learning is, uh, uh, something that is taught in schools, and it might not have been taught, um, in schools, or you might not have known that it was being taught in schools, but back in the day when, when you went to school, or certainly when I went to school 100 years ago. So, um, I'm just bringing this up because this is where our, our school partners are really key in providing some of these things, and then everything that, that happens beyond that into the community also helps with that social-emotional learning piece, as so Commissioner Ruderman was referencing earlier about, um, being a, a coach, and certainly that helps with social-emotional learning as well. Another project that I mentioned earlier, um, or that I, we were talking about in the Inter-Agency Services Collaborative was Norwood Young America asked to help purchase more additional social-emotional learning curriculum for their, um, school, and then positive behaviors interventions and supports programs. These programs would, um, might be possible, but they're more effective because of our collaborative work across the systems in the youth, with youth and their families. Going into, uh, more social-emotional learning, I want to talk about our, um, the impact of our School Link Mental Health Services. Our School Link Mental Health Program is truly a sweet spot of prevention and mental health intervention. Many youths served in this program throughout the state would never be served without this service delivery model. I want to say to you and remind you that Carver County was one of the pioneers in this intervention, and the model is now spread throughout the state and in many states in the country. I hear from my colleagues at, uh, DHS that the only, um, funding that they're pretty confident in getting every year is when they go in front of the legislature to fund school-based mental health, because every legislator in the state wants school-based mental health services in their district. The outcomes have been just amazing, and please don't ask me to quote any outcomes today, but I could do a follow-up if needed. Your support of the School Link Program and then the complimentary summer prep program have, have been, um, vital to our early intervention work with you. Um, just to give you an example, in 2023, we served 290 students in the School Link Program in the, in the schools that we are in in the district, uh, or I'm sorry, in the county, and, um, so... Moving on, um, we then talk about prevention of trauma and intervention. Uh, there's some statistics up here about post-traumatic stress disorder, and certainly, um, Shelley and her department see this on a regular basis, we also see the impact of post-traumatic stress disorder in our, uh, clinic base. Truly, trauma is a significant factor in the development of mental health symptoms, and while we know we can't prevent all forms of traumatic events, prevention of trauma wherever we can is one of our strongest prevention strategies.
Okay, so I have a question for you. How many of you have heard of an ACE and not the playing card? Okay, great, wonderful, you read my notes, okay. Um, so ACEs is actually stands for adverse childhood experiences. Um, ACE research came from a study of people that were coming into a medical clinic in the late, uh, 90s, uh, where researchers during medical exams asked adults about their childhood experiences. There was a high connection between the number of adverse experiences a child had and a higher risk to serious health disorders to include death, and we see this a lot in the child welfare world, a lot of people coming in with a lot of adverse and trauma experiences. An adverse experience can be, uh, child has experienced one or more events in their childhood like abuse, neglect, death, um, mental health struggles, substance use struggles. The scary part is that adversity can actually change your DNA over time. This is called epigenetics. So I think I've heard something like it can last for like five generations. So just imagine the impact of war or hunger on a child and on their DNA. But with, um, what is in our news today, you're probably also thinking of war, right? So definitely war. Um, it is important to note, um, that the good thing is that ACEs can be changed over time, and that's really what we're hoping to do. So, um, according, there's some information on here, one in six children reported they experienced four or more type of ACEs, and two-thirds of Americans have experienced at least one adverse childhood event. So why is this important? For me, it's important because it's also, it's costly in so many ways. It costs almost $750 billion in the U.S., Bermuda and Canada. Just imagine if we could have an impact on prenatal exposure, poverty, housing, or overall parenting support. But, the nice thing about ACEs is there's hope, there are things that we can do, so I don't want to depress you too much. So the good news is, is here, right? There's hope, and these are different things that we can do and be doing as a community to prevent mental health. Um, we can raise awareness around abuse and neglect, hopefully you saw our Pinwheels out there in April, um, that was about child abuse prevention, um, month in April. Um, this month, it's about foster care, you know, recognition month, right? The power of, of providing our children with healthy, strong adults. So everyone should have access to mental health and medical care. When you look at this slide, you can see all the different things that we can be doing as a community, raising awareness, providing mental health, some of the team-based care that we see at First Street Center with our medical providers. We also know that we should be sleeping and eating healthy, so some of the things you've done with our, our local food banks is really imperative. Exercise, meditation, mindfulness, healthy relationships, and we also need a really healthy, fully-staffed workforce in order to do this work.
I can guess, but what's BH stand for?
Behavioral Health.
That's what I was going to guess.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, the good news, we are, is that we are on the right track, right? We, we are talking about working together with public health and with our school and child welfare. We're sitting here talking to you today, we have services that we can be providing. We have excellent examples in Carver County with the Communities of Belonging, with Richard's team and early childhood committees, and we're working together, uh, to prevent educational neglect, we're doing pre-diversion, so children that are going to school, instead of waiting for them to hit our child protection system, we're, we're reading, we're meeting with the family and the school and the children is saying, what can we do to help, what's going on? The early, the TNC, I talked about that, Future Community Resource Centers. I have greatly appreciated your support recently when, when Heather and Kate came to you and said, hey, could, could you turn this money over to help? We are really on track to assess our needs and address our community, meeting their needs in the community without them having to go through, may I say, bureaucratic governmental functions, you know, it is a different world. So, we are on the right track, that's a picture of our Pinwheels out front from April. We need help in integrating our service delivery. Uh, that integration is one of Health and Human Services', um, primary strategic plan is how can we be better working together so everybody has one door that they can come into and get all the help that they need. Um, we need to continue to integrate other services and provide parent support, encourage positive, healthy relationships, focusing on healthy community with healthy food, you know, talking about Christmas in May, we're talking about supporting our families and, and your support with Jen's Hou, Jen Romero's Housing Program, those are all on the right track. And we, we also need to be able to provide our community with well-paying jobs. As you have heard us talk, hopefully, we have demonstrated the importance of how we as a community must be able to support our families to be safe and strong, since our families are the building blocks of the community for us. families are the building blocks of the community for us.
Shelley, so the next area that we can go into is what we call early identification and consistent care. So we talked a lot about, you know, preventing and, and getting in early and helping youth with, hopefully preventing needing to go into more formalized mental health services, although our School Link mental health also includes that. Early identification and is a really important part of managing a mental health issue. People who are starting to show an emergence of mental health needs often aren't aware of it themselves. Their families might be kind of used to what they're seeing and aren't necessarily recognizing that it's maybe it's something that needs more assertive treatment. And then certainly with certain illnesses like an onset of a psychotic episode, that importance of getting in and getting that treatment happening is really key in terms of recovery and the long-term impact of, on that mental health. So, so someone who's experiencing depression and untreated often doesn't recognize that it's not their fault, okay? They might be so depressed that they, they just kind of go, why can't I get this together? Why is it I keep failing? Why is it I this? Why is it I that? And they often internalize, well, this must be about who I am and my character. And instead, what we hope to help people learn and understand is it's not about their character, it's about a condition that they have that needs treatment. People who get treatment are often amazed at how much better they can feel and function when they get their treatment. And once they start to feel better, we then help them to develop strategies to maintain their mental health, because not all of it can just go away. So then we move into what we call stability and symptom management, which is, direct services are seen as a prevention tool and an intervention. So things like therapy, medication management, our case management services, which are, I can't tell you how much, they're the glue that holds a lot of this together for clients, our community support programs, our support groups. We have additional services that we don't offer specifically through Carver County, but are available either nearby or within Carver County, such as peer support services. The goal of our stability and symptom management is to have elements in place that supports both symptom relief and optimal functioning. And then I just also want to know that the key, that's key that the social determinants of health are also met. So I'm not going to spend much time on this, you've probably heard about it in other discussions. But this is just a brief graphic that talks about the kinds of things that are, are, we all need in our lives to have a full and, and healthy life and to be most as successful as we can be. When people with mental illness are able to access education, get a job, be welcomed as a member of the community and contribute to their community, they will have more success in maintaining their mental health. So the other thing that needs to happen is we need to talk about ensuring that resources, resources are in place that support clients who may have an increase in symptoms. So sometimes people have what we call a serious and persistent mental illness, which means that it's very serious and it, and it needs pretty constant management. So if you think about bipolar disorder or schizophrenia, severe depression, those would be in our serious and persistent mental illness categories. Prime examples of managing those are, are community support groups and adult mental health case management services. Our managers are made, have, provide amazing resources for their clients in helping ensure that they have the services they need, but also, and this is the key, they develop the working relationships with those clients that allow them to recognize the signs that a client might be struggling and help that client to trust that they're there for their goodwill. Our case managers will work closely with their clients to help them manage their increase in symptoms and use the plans that they have put in place, which could be a variety of things. And again, that might be for a longer conversation if you wanted to come back again. All right. Finally, before Richard comes back up, I want to talk a little bit about our, what we call our, we don't often think of a crisis line and a 988 service as a prevention strategy, but I want to tell you that every single day, it is a prevention strategy of, and, and of untold hurt that we don't even know about because of the people answering the phones and going out and meeting with clients. In 2023, Carver and McLeod Crisis Team provided 1,352 crisis assessments in the communities in Carver and McLeod County, Bridgeview Medical Center and 212 ERs, the schools and the county jail. In addition, our team answered thousands of calls coming in on our crisis line through our 911 dispatch center, where we have a social worker co-located as often as possible, and through our 988 call center right here in Carver County. Remember that we are one of four call centers located in the state of Minnesota, one of five serving the state of Minnesota. As we look to 2025, we anticipate significant changes coming to our responsibilities as a 988 call center. We recently applied for additional grant funds to support the staffing that will be required to respond to this increased need. I'd hoped to be able to come and share an announcement with you about that in this meeting, but we were notified that the grant announcements are delayed, so I'm not able to do that. But in the meantime, I just want you to know that our crisis team continues to provide suicide prevention services 24/7. And finally, before I return it back to Richard, I want to publicly express my profound gratitude, and I'm sure Shelley joins me in that, for the contributions of each staff member to the mental health of each person that we serve. We, Shelley and I are blessed to be able to lead these teams, but they are the ones doing the hard work every day, and, and I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. Richard.
Now that you've piqued our interest, we're looking forward to that grant announcement in the future.
Hopefully it's a good one.
Exactly, right. Don't show off if it isn't.
Okay.
Dr. Scott.
I love my job, partly because of the leadership that's within it, starting with you all, but also because we have an opportunity to work with our entire community. I think as you've seen from this presentation, it takes a village, you know, to really address the issues that we all have. We talked a little bit about those determinants that affect our health. As you all know, Carver County continues to be one of the healthiest counties in Minnesota and one of the healthiest counties in the United States. That applies both to our physical health and to our mental wellness and our mental well-being. And that's because we've gotten really good at mobilizing our resources in our community to work together in a synergistic way to address our holistic needs, both mind, body, and spirit. And I think is that we can feel really proud about the work that we do, and in the recognition of that pride of what we do, and in the recognition of, of really helping the community understand the importance of mental health. While we always address it across the whole year, as Commissioner Fahey mentioned, we'd like to take this month of May to recognize it. And so we come to the board to ask that you adopt May 2024 as the Mental Health Awareness Month. And if it pleases the Chair, I would like to read the proclamation that we're hoping for you folks to adopt.
Would you please? You do a so much, so much better job than I would. So thank you.
Thank you. We all have our roles to play, right? And I have a joke there, but I won't get into it. Whereas mental health impacts the health and well-being of our children, families, schools, businesses, and the communities. And whereas COVID-19 pandemic and current economic conditions have exacerbated the stress, trauma, anxiety, depression, and suicide ideation across communities, making mental health awareness and the provision of services more important now than ever. Whereas one in five adults and one in four young persons between the ages of 13 to 17 years experiences a mental health problem in any given year. And whereas suicide is the leading cause of death for US children ages 10 to 14, and the 11th leading cause of death across the nation, and a higher percentage of older adults, I'm in that category almost, commit suicide more than other, any other age group. Whereas it's critical to increase the awareness and knowledge of mental health problems and how to get help when it's needed, and whereas early identification and treatment are vital to the prevention of suicide and successful management of mental health problems and recovery. And whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma that surrounds mental illness and discourages people from getting the help they need. And whereas public education and civic activities can encourage mental wellness and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness, therefore be it resolved that we, the County, Carver County Board of Commissioners, do hereby acknowledge the month of May 2024 as Mental Health Month in Carver County, in honor of the dedicated professionals who work to create a safer and healthier community in Carver County.
Mr. Chair, I wholeheartedly move to approve the Mental Health Services Month in the resolution brought forward.
We have a motion.
I would second.
We have a second. Motion by Commissioner Ruderman, second by Commissioner Lynch. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, not about.
Commissioner Ruderman.
The motion, but if, was it time to have comments on the presentation or after?
But we have the motion first and then, the one thing on the motion, I was not aware, one of your first or fourth, whereas, older adults 65 and above commit suicide more often than any other age group? That is striking to me. I did not realize that.
But we're hoping to change that.
Thank you very much. And do you see the proposed legislation, I'm not sure if it even passed yet, to assist in suicide of older adults? Is that going to affect this statistic?
Chair, exactly. I'm not prepared to comment that on this time. I have not had a chance, obviously familiar with some of the discussion on that issue. Obviously, there's points of view from different points, in different sides. I'd be happy to do.
Unfair question to ask, I realize that.
I know that's such a sensitive issue, so I feel a little uncomfortable.
The statistic alone was very striking to me. I, thank you. Any other discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, all in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, questions or discussion on the presentation? Commissioner Ruderman.
Mr. Chair, I always ask the question, who does it well? And I think the answer is us. And I think that's two-fold. One, we have got great staff that's looking at this in an objective way. I think, two, we've got leadership that's stepping forward and, and trying to raise some of the taboo to have these conversations. But I think, three, is just the nature of the county that we live in. We simply don't have the problems that some of our peer counties have, so that gives us the luxury and the obligation to step up and do things more upstream. And so I wanted to talk about the upstream, so proud of it. I think there's, my focus area is the youth aged four to eight, or my, my kids, four and eight. And I, and I get a chance to see this, I also see the aging population, and I think probably the greatest and growing pandemic that we've ever seen is loneliness. And I think our team has looked at the Communities of Belonging, which I'd love to rename the Communities of Belonging and Engagement, because it's not just showing up, it's being engaged, and you guys are engaged in the work. I want to point out a couple of things that were said, but I wanted to call them out. And I know these, I use your analogy, Dr. Scott, about it's paint by number, because not just one thing's going to do it, but you get the full picture if you do it all. I think there's a big gap between need and insurance, and I think it needs to be stated over and over, and none better than to point out the sheriff's office elevating checkup from the neck up. And I think a number of us might have said, well, wait a minute, isn't that what insurance is for, this phone number or whatever? But the sheriff stepping forward and saying, everybody on staff gets to be with, has to be with a, a person to sit down with, and whether they're talking about the Vikings or accumulated trauma or need, that lowers barriers that happened well before, you have to fill out all the paperwork and all the things that go with it, stigmas included. And so I point to that. Marty was in the room, he's not in the room, but I look at parks. And it's not just a throwaway thing, but parks, lakes, and trails are a piece of that equation. We can't park ourselves to all of the answers, but I think that's super important in our investment in parks. I think that the warning that I give my kids often is turn off the social and, and stop getting your high off of, of the chaos of social media. I think schools are starting to see that too, and make people turn their phones off or turn them in during the school day. I also want to say that there's a couple of things that I'd like for our staff and our board to consider. One is, we have year-end savings, and oftentimes, year-end savings is the result of not being able to fill positions. And so we gather these dollars and we reallocate those in different ways. And so I think when we get into off-site session and budget, I think we need to strongly look at, at least half of the dollars generated from those positions, we reinvest in the people that are there. And so if somebody is in one of those roles, first, it's hard to find them, two, it's highly competitive, three, it's very expensive. And so how do we retain those? And I think that something like that could get us down the path. The second thing is something I call on-ramps to summer that I've been an advocate for. I think we as a board and as a county and as a community can establish something like this. What would it look like if every second, third, and fourth grader, we had, we had a goal of each one of those participating, at least two community activities? And I don't say that because you've got the elitists that want their kid to be a D1 athlete, and they've got the means to do so. Or, you know, little Jimmy that wants to pick up the clarinet. I do those because second, third, and fourth is one of the more impressionable areas. And if we simply were able to lower barriers for people to come into community, we as a community can solve some of these things. I think if all of us sat outside of middle school with the principal and with the teachers and with our staff, we could say, if we don't do something about that kid walking in, they're going to end up on the emergency pile. And I'd venture to guess 75-plus percent of the dollars and effort at the state and federal level are for crisis. We simply don't have the resources to manage crisis, so we have no other, no other option than to work, to move upstream. And I think a program like that with a goal, a stated goal of every second, third, and fourth grader has a chance to participate, we can lower cost barriers, we can look at lower ride barriers, we can look at the rest, I think it would benefit the community immensely. So those are my comments. I, I look to you authentically and say, thank you for what you're doing, because we just scratched the surface. We, you, we didn't even get to the call that you get at 6 o'clock on a Sunday. We didn't get to the conversation of you're working on Christmas Day and your staff. We didn't get to the conversation of your staff and their own mental health when they're dealing with us on a regular basis, because these are very real and they impact us in all ways of life. So thank you for what you're doing, and I know thank you isn't enough, we need to put actions behind it as well. So thank you for doing those things as well.
Other thoughts on the presentation? Commissioner Fahey.
Dr. Scott and Stephanie and Shelley, thank you. A question for you, Shelley. You had mentioned about the school and the school systems. Are all the schools in the county currently on board when we talk about the child welfare, the domestic abuse, and the children protection? Is a relationship with all the school districts in place?
That is such a great question, Commissioner. And yes, I would say they all are. There are multiple ways or avenues that we are involved with the school. Either we're in the school, School Link is in the school, we have shared collaborative meetings with the schools. There actually is a statute that allows us to meet, to talk about concerning students. We're advocates of that because we believe strongly that if we're talking and, and talking together, that we can put together the puzzle and have a better picture of what's going on. If we would have had a law like that during Columbine, it probably would have prevented that crisis.
Thank you.
I'll just add, our School Link teams, and as does Relate, I want to not leave Relate Counseling Center out there, they're our partner in School Link Services here in Carver County. We, our staff are always encouraged to work with, closely with, there's, every school district calls it a different, but they have teams of staff that, school counselors, special ed staff, groups of staff, that their job is a lot to kind of make sure that they're not missing those kids who might be at risk. And they're bringing those to a team and, and saying, what kind of interventions can we do? What have we done? How are we reaching out to parents? But also, how are we reaching out for other services? And our goal is always that our staff are well-connected to those teams, so that as kids are, are being recognized within that system, that, that they're getting those access to referrals.
Just to follow up on that School Link, just talking about schools, not only public schools, but you're talking about private high schools and private elementary schools. What connections do we have? Because obviously, kids in crisis are all over.
Right. So our School Link grants are, are limited to be used for public school systems. So that's just a limitation of the grant. I know that, I don't know what's happening for sure in Carver County, but I know that there have been other agencies that have been working with some of the other private schools to provide some services onsite. I just couldn't tell you which ones they would be right now.
Okay. Any other comments on the presentation? I just want to say, I, a person's always thought about the physical well-being of the unborn child. Never really dawned on a person of the mental crisis that that child could be going through and, and how that might affect, some of us obviously are kids or grandkids of the depression era, and you mentioned how some of the stigmas, some of the problems that these people went through during the depression or certain areas of their life goes on for generations. And like it or not, you can feel it on certain issues that, you know, hey, that came because of grandpa or grandma or mom and dad, and thanks for doing that. And your last slide here, crisis lines, we've heard that, and 988, the warm line service. To me, that's a different touch. I don't know who came up with it, and you want to explain a little bit more about that?
Sure. Chair Degler, we have, we have, we do not provide the warm line service here in Carver County, but we regularly refer out to a warm line. So sometimes what happens is that people have, don't know who else to call, so they'll call our crisis line. And, and we want them to call, and we welcome all those callers. Sometimes what they need is just somebody that they can talk to, like, just talk to in the middle of the night when they can't sleep or they're worried about something. So the warm line is a lovely service that is available in the state of Minnesota and throughout the country, to be kind of a second. to be kind of a second-tier line for people who just need somebody to talk to. And, you know, I often think about, are people sitting somewhere in the middle of the night taking these calls? And I just have so much respect for the work that they do, because, yeah, because who do you call at three o'clock in the morning when you're struggling in that way?
Well, thank you for having that service, because not everybody has a grandpa or a grandma or either a mother and dad that'll pick up the phone in the middle of the night. And then again, even if you do have, they might not have the answers or the ear to just plain listen.
Yeah.
So thank you for what you do.
Mr. Chair, just one more thing. I had it noted, I forgot to mention it. And Heather, I'll look towards you, but it feels like the need in this space is increasing, and it feels like the funding is decreasing. And I think something that recently happened at the state created an instance, or multiple instances, where there's a larger funding gap. And so if, you can just comment on that. And while you do, and I don't want to make this a sterile-type thing, but there is ROI to this stuff. There was a, let me see if I can get to it quick. It says, depressed employees' work performance is a par on average of twenty percent. Nine percent of employees leave a job because of well-being-related concerns. Forty-five percent of adults keep mental care and receive an incorrect diagnosis. It takes an average of twenty-five days to see a psychiatrist. Eight-point-four million adults provide unpaid assistance to individuals in mental health problems. The list goes on and on and on. So there is an ROI. You gotta do the right thing, whether there is or isn't a calculator, there is an ROI. My concern is, is this is just another unfunded state mandate where they haven't caught up to the needs, and then we have to shoulder that, and we have to make tough decisions as to, where do we pull budget from? Where do we add budget? I don't know if you can speak to that now or maybe another day.
Welcome, Heather. Not exactly on the presentation, but I think it relates to it.
That's all right. Good morning, Board Chair, Commissioners. Commissioner Urdeman, thank you for the question. Yes, I had sent to you a recent article that was in the Star Tribune, where they referenced just the gap and the failing providers across our state because of a lack of funding. One of the pieces that I have commented to the board before was the legislature last year in the 2023 session did a bit of victory lap, that they had issued a three percent rate increase for mental health services, which was the first increase in five-plus years. But that gap that got created from many, many years of no increase has created such a shortfall that providers around us that are private, either nonprofit or for-profit providers, are just dropping, I'll be honest, like flies. I mean, every single week, I get a list, and more and more providers just say, I can't keep, I can't, you know, these are needed services, demand is high, we just don't have the funding to hire the staff we need to hire. So, you know, we don't have anybody to do the work, or we just can't even afford the rent anymore in the space we're in, and providers are closing. I give thanks to this board. I've continually been so grateful for the support, because as you talk about unfunded mandates, much of that gap that has been created from low reimbursement rates has been supported through this board, whether it's paying for the building that First Street Center is in or covering the gap when we don't break even on services. And that's pretty common in outpatient services and some of the other services we provide. We understand in Carver County, sometimes we're the last stop. I mean, we, especially for folks who are in our western part, you know, First Street Center is one of our only providers. And so there's a great need. Our services are very valuable, but the rates that we get reimbursed for, particularly for persons on medical assistance, don't come close to covering the cost. So again, appreciate the support, but it is something that I continue to advocate at the state level. And I encourage folks to advocate with their legislators, that I've done some, you know, high-level math. We probably need a fifteen percent increase in the legislature to be able to really break even, not a three percent. So I don't, I've been watching closely this legislative session. Not so sure we're going to get what we need once again, but we continue to provide the services and do the best we can, knowing that we have very limited resources, limited funding, but amazing staff who do the work.
Thank you. Thank you, Heather, Dr. Scott, Shelley, Michelle, for all the good work that you've been doing. Keep it up. Moving on, item 6.3, brought to us by Court Services, Comprehensive Plan for 2024. Mr. Eric Johnson, Court Service Director. Thank you for your patience, Eric.
You bet. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for indulging me for ten to fifteen minutes this morning. I could promise you this will be less controversial than marijuana, so it should be fairly easy.
You never know.
Never know, never know. I'm going to go on a little preamble here before I introduce a couple of people here, a couple of important people here. Minnesota Statute 401.10 describes the funding formula for probation funding by the Minnesota Department of Corrections. Minnesota Statute 401.02 includes the requirements to receive the above, the subsidy for probation services in Minnesota. One of the requirements of the statute is to submit a comprehensive plan to the Department of Corrections. This won't be every year, but in years past, this requirement only applied to the Community Corrections Act counties, which are the Hennepin, the Ramses, the Dakotas, the Washingtons, the bigger counties. And now it applies to every probation agency in every county to submit this comprehensive plan. So this comprehensive plan that was sent to you this, earlier this week, or last week, was sent to the Justice Advisory Team, which is assembled by our county attorney, Mark Metz. It involves all the justice professionals, so that, I sent that out for comment as part of the statutory requirements. The statutory requirements, again, are different for my office as opposed to a Community Corrections Act county. I don't necessarily have to have an advisory board, but I'm using the Justice Advisory Team as that, kind of that body. So I would like to introduce a couple of people. I promised them they wouldn't have to talk unless they were given a question. Sean McMonigal. Sean is our district supervisor of our Minnesota Department of Corrections Chaska Felony Office. So his office handles the adult felons in Carver County. And also, Kristy Holcomb is our probation supervisor. When, I think it was Commissioner Urdeman, talked about how Diane Wabi has kept all of you in line, Kristy keeps me in line. Kristy is not absent-minded like me.
That's a tough job.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. So when Kristy asks for PTO, I smile and tell her she can have it, but I really don't like it very much when she leaves. So these two are instrumental in what we do. I'll probably talk about them a little more, but I just wanted you to meet Sean and Kristy.
Welcome, both of you. I have to ask Sean, where are you housed?
We are about Petron's next to the public defender's office in Chaska.
Thank you.
For those of you who aren't familiar with Petron, you can get your lunch in about ten minutes. Get in and out of there in twenty, ten minutes.
You run into Sean, it's going to take you longer.
Right. So I want to make one, another point here before I start. It's not common practice for the Department of Corrections and a county probation agency to, number one, submit their comprehensive plan together, and, number two, go to the board together. I asked a group of my directors, our fellow directors across the state, yeah, how many of you are going to go to the board with your local Department of Corrections? And a lot of them said, nope. The relationships are not always this good. Now, we have a very, very good relationship with our felony office. One of the things we do, and it's actually done statewide, but if we both have a case open, we don't want two POs working on the case. They're the higher level of offense, so we transfer that case over to them. So there's one person supervising those cases, so. So we supervise the adult misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor cases. They supervise the adult felony cases. For juveniles, Court Services does all of it, from petty misdemeanor all the way up to felony. So that's kind of how the county probation system works. Both of our agencies and even the bigger counties, like the Community Corrections Act counties, we all pretty much do the same thing, although there's three delivery systems. We make it work pretty well. Sure, there's some glitches, because there's three different delivery systems, but we all work together pretty well. We all are trained in the same way. There's a statewide training academy that when we hire a new agent, they go through it. Just, it's months-long training, from anywhere from core correctional practices to facilitating cognitive skills groups, which we'll talk about a little bit. But we all kind of do the same thing in terms of training. Our, we have a staff, Jackie Nichols, who is currently a trainer for that statewide training committee. So once in a while, she'll go up to Camp Ripley, and she'll supervise a bunch of new probation agents. So, or she'll train a bunch of new supervision agents. Also, as you know, we have Sentenced Service Crew here. Kelly Schultz is our crew leader. That relationship is another good relationship we have with the Department of Correction, is that we contract with the Department of Corrections, it's their employee. We pay seventy-five percent of the expenses for that, and the Department of Corrections handles the other twenty-five percent. They also supervise that particular employee. We house the employee, so there's kind of a symbiotic relationship. And as you know, STS has been happening here in Carver County for fifty years. Fifty, it certainly predates me. Strategic planning. You're going to think this sounds obvious, but we really are, in our business, we're taking more of a person-centered approach than we ever have. When I say that, you might think, well, of course you should do that. But we really had more of a conditions-based approach for many, many years. I've been in the field for almost thirty-three years now. And we used to rely really heavily on simply enforcing probation conditions. Now, it doesn't really take a whole lot of talent and ability to simply enforce a court order. I can just simply say, you either do this, and if you don't, I'm going to file a probation violation, and I'm going to go off and squeal to the judge that you're not doing it. Doesn't take a whole lot of talent and time. So we're really trying to do more individualized case plans for our moderate-to-high-risk people. Years ago, we used to, when I was a probation officer, I'll be transparent, it was really fun to pluck out a low-risk person. And shockingly, they'd do everything the judge ordered, and they wouldn't come back in the system. We'd say, wow, what a good PO I am, when I was plucking out the low-risk people. And the reality is, is that a lot of the people we work with in our business would be just fine without us. They're probably not going to come back without us. So we really want to focus our attention on the moderate-to-high-risk folks. And when I say that, we really want to be intentional on that. Again, years ago, I'll give you the dichotomy here, is we used to be brokers. We'd say, okay, I'm not doing that stuff. I'm just going to send them to Sally, the therapist, and she'll work on all this stuff for them. Well, we don't have many of those therapists left anymore, for a variety of reasons I won't get into. So we have to do the direct care ourselves now. So we do a lot of interventions with our moderate and high-risk, I'll call them clients, it's not a good name for it, but the trendy name now is Justice Involve Individuals. I'm not going to say that fifty times over and over again. So I'll call them clients, because it's a lot easier to say. Our interactions really focus on change. We use a motivational approach to go beyond simply the conditions of probation. This has been a heavy lift for us to convince our probation officers across the state to do this, to actually do the direct care, to teach skills. For those of you who have kids, the way you taught your child to do something, or if you wanted to see a behavior, you would show them how to do it. You would have them do it, you'd have them practice, and you'd give them homework. And you'd have them apply it to real-life situations. Same concept here. We're doing this with our moderate-to-high-risk clients. So the goal really is risk reduction, which leads to the ultimate goal, which is increasing safety of the public. But we do that by reducing risk. We do that by purposeful, intentional interactions with our clients using a variety of approaches that we've all been trained in. So the state of Minnesota in probation has been working with the Council of State Governments in its justice reinvestment initiative for the past two or three years. That group, that national group, was very key in getting what, as all of you know, we got additional funding for probation in Minnesota from the state. That group, the Council of State Governments, I think was key in securing that funding, because they basically told the state of Minnesota, if you want your probation system to work and to actually reduce risk, you need to fund it better. And they did. They did. It's not perfect, of course, but it certainly helped. It allowed me, our office, to hire an agent, allowed Sean to hire two agents in his office. I used to tease the Department of Corrections, because they always had too high a caseloads, and I can't really tease them about that anymore, because they've done better with that, they've hired more people. I could probably find something else to tease them about, and I will, but I can't tease them about, you know, lack of resources anymore. So we really want to focus on case planning. Again, we want to go above and beyond probation conditions. We want to actually affect change. All the interactions with our moderate-to-high-risk clients, what we train our agents to do is we're talking about change all the time. And we're hopefully having that client bring up the fact that they need to change. So one of the things that, there's other things that the Council of State Governments recommended for the state of Minnesota, and these are things that we're involved in, is incentives and sanctions. There's a grid that's being tossed around now at the state level to help counties, to assist counties, and hopefully will be implemented, to tell us, okay, if this behavior happens, what incentive can you give? What sanction can you give? So that's being worked on, and it's one of the recommendations that was made to the legislature. Also, supervision outcome data. I'll be honest here, the database that we use in probation was not meant to be a data collection database. It was a case management system. So Minnesota's not very good in terms of data collection in Minnesota for probation. So we're working on how to improve that. And I'm on a couple committees, statewide committees, to hopefully improve the data collection. Because sometimes the legislature will say, well, how many people across the state completed probation successfully? And some of these things that they ask, we can't produce, because we don't have the means to do that. So we're working on that. Also, as part of that recommendation, Sean's office is working on standards for intensive supervised release, meaning the folks that are being released from prison, they're working on standards to supervise those folks. Sean was an intensive, ISR agent, intensive supervised release agent for years. So he's well-versed in that. We also do pre-trial services, which nobody really knows. When you think probation, you think somebody that's already been through the system and now we're supervising. We do a lot of pre-trial services. We do testing, drug testing, both our offices do that. We also do bail studies. So anybody who's arrested for a particular offense, we, one of our agents does a bail evaluation, submits it to the court, and the court uses that to determine bail amounts, whether they're going to be released or not. The Department of Corrections provides supervision from all those released from Minnesota prisons. They, I mentioned that. Court Services, we continue to handle all the juvenile diversion cases. We've been doing that for, again, about fifty years. We recently, I'm kind of excited about this, because it's taken about three years to figure this out, but we're recently, we're going to launch a juvenile domestic diversion. So a child who is arrested for an assault made on one of their parents oftentimes ends up in our JDC, and we don't really want that. So we're trying to keep these kids out of the system by doing a diversion program, because it's often more about family systems than sheer delinquency on the part of the child. So we're doing that, we're actually starting that this month. One of our bread and butters that we've done for many, many years is both pre-sentence investigations and predispositional reports for juveniles. We make recommendations all the time to the court for sentencing. So both of us adhere to what we call best practices. Best practices is not exclusive to probation. It's being heard all over in the medical field and elsewhere. But both of us are trained in Decision Points, which is a cognitive skills curriculum. We're actually, our agents are actually teaching these classes. Years ago, I believe I taught a couple of these classes in the jail. Haven't done it for many years, but both of our offices are regularly, again, it's that direct service. We're actually teaching skills to the people that we supervise. We have gender-specific caseloads whenever we can manage that. Court Services, as you may know, are trying to get our STRIVE program, which is our boys, high-risk boys program, that Mitchell Dickinson and Ryan Jane in our office are starting. There'll be a contract coming to the board soon on that. Contract for our girls program, Dionian, has already been through the board, and we're currently working on that program for our higher-risk girls. It's just a different approach than we've taken before. So in summary, our supervision is so much more intentional and focused than in years past. And it's a lot of work, but it's a lot more fun, and it's going to garner better results. We, there's an initiative to cap caseload sizes. There's certain, if you really want to affect change on your caseload, there's certain, there's numbers out there, and I won't get into them now, but basically, all of our caseloads have always been too big to actually make a difference. caseloads have always been too big to actually make a difference. Some of the research that has come out in the last ten, fifteen years says that for the higher-risk people, there's a term called dosage, just like dosage for medical, that we have to put as many as three hundred hours of service on one person for them to reduce their risk. Now, this is difficult to do, most departments can't do it, but that's really what we're striving towards. We are now making more regular incentives for early discharge, not just because they complete their probation conditions, but they might, they might complete some interventions and do some homework and some exercises and do really well on it. But we can, now we have the ability to do more early discharges if a client has earned it. We focus on skills, 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 and I've been over that many, many times today. But we're not going to do just sanctions either, we're going to do rewards. I'm sure all of you have heard the four-to-one ratio, and if you really want somebody to change, you should probably give them four rewards to every sanction. So we try to do that, too. Now, in our business, again, that's not easy. Can't pay anybody. You know, we can give them atta boys and atta girls, but there's, in terms of rewards, we're limited, but we do the best we can with what we have. Really, our goal is to keep people out of jail and prison and keep kids out of out-of-home placement. So that's why we're doing all these things. We want to focus our community, focus on community-based interventions, so we can keep, because as you know, to put a child in out-of-home placement is very expensive. It's even more expensive now, it's actually eye-poppingly expensive. And it's very expensive to put people in jails and prisons as well. So last but not least, it wouldn't be a comp plan if we didn't talk about our treatment courts, as all of you have heard a lot about lately. Our drug court numbers are up, and the program is vibrant. I'm happy to say that we used to pay the Department of Corrections for their probation agent for our drug court. Now they've embedded that agent into the drug court, so that we are not contracting with them anymore to pay for that probation agent. So that was a commitment they made, and we're thankful for that. The drug court grant extends to September 30th, 2026. We got a little bit of federal money for the foreseeable future. Vets Court, as you know, is now the First Judicial District Vets Court, so we've expanded quite a bit. Right now, it's just Dakota Scott and Carver, but hopefully that will be expanded to the other counties in the First Judicial District. So with that, I didn't want to talk about widgets today, because the fact that we have thirteen hundred people on probation doesn't really mean anything. I wanted to focus on what our agents are doing, because that's what really matters. So I'll open it up to questions, then ask for an approval.
Couple of quick questions. You mentioned pretrial testing. Are you talking about drug testing?
Yes. Drug testing, alcohol testing, yeah.
And then the last thing, we're here today to talk about the comprehensive plan. You submitted this to the Justice Advisory Team. Did you get a response? And was there any inclusions or deletions or changes made?
There was only one change. I changed my organizational chart, Mr. Chair.
So we must have had a positive response from the team.
It was, I'll take no responses, positive, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Commissioner Workman?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, this, like, the previous presentation is sort of the, the not sexy part of county government, which I talk about a lot, because those people at City Hall, they get to build neighborhoods, and those legislators, what a bunch of ivory towerites. But this is what we do, and you do a really good job of presenting this and where we're going, and I really like the cooperation. The parole officer that I live with at home, probably, you should probably hire her. I'm temporarily off the leash here at the county board, but I always appreciate your, when you say widgets, you mean all the gadgets you do to catch the folks?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Workman, I mean numbers, which are boring.
Okay. But I do appreciate it. Thirteen hundred Carver County residents are on probation?
Are they our residents, or are they just housed?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Workman, they aren't necessarily residents, but we do transfer cases to their residence counties.
Thirteen hundred.
That seemed like a high number, but I do appreciate you, you good folks, taking care of that while we're at the mall. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Workman, thank you for that. I think if you ask the average person walking down the street what a probation officer does, they will not know. I didn't know what it was when I came out of college, and I wanted to do it, so.
Until you got into the system.
Right.
Other comments? Commissioner Lynch?
Only that, with that parole officer crack, don't forget Mother's Day.
Commissioner Fahy?
Mr. Chair, Eric, in the comp plan, you had talked about the STRIVE program for juvenile males. Did that roll out at the end of April?
It is, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Fahy, it has started in a certain capacity. I'm waiting for a contract to really get started on that, but that's been a partnership with, actually, Southwest Christian High School, offered for us to use their facilities, their indoor and outdoor facilities, for these kids to come and do activities with probation officers and a volunteer, and they have therapy and skill sessions embedded in that. So we're really excited about, we're just not quite there, because we're working on some insurance situations. And as you know, Sonia Walter is very, her risk manager is very...
Thorough.
She does her job well. So we're trying to get through that right now.
And then just one final point. You had talked about assault and domestic assault and with the victim concerns. Just read a couple of your lines, that "The needs of victims vary based upon the individual and their unique circumstances. Mostly common victims want to be, want to be and feel safe, to be afforded the opportunity to recover from the trauma associated with their experience, and then to regain a sense of control over their lives. And then supporting efforts to restore victims from the harms experienced." And then you talk about the partnership with the Southern Valley Alliance, and I'm assuming that partnership continues to grow with their new facility now in Shakka.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Fahy, correct. We have a great relationship with Southern Valley Alliance. As a matter of fact, I think we're due to invite them to one of our staff meetings to talk about the new things they're doing. So yes, correct.
Thank you.
Other questions, concerns?
Just one last comment, and that's the presentation before and then the presentation here. You know, we're always out and about, and we talk to other commissioners across the state. The one, they have a lot of problems that we don't have, because we have absolute cooperation, and the people who work together, and it just, it makes life so much easier. So it's just a comment to all our staff, not just one particular one, but all our staff seem to work really, really well together.
Oh, thank you. And with that, we're looking for a motion to approve the comprehensive plan submitted by the Carver County Court Services and Department of Corrections.
To approve.
Motion by Commissioner Ruderman. Second by Commissioner Workman. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, keep up the good work, and I enjoy the fact that you're working together. I mean, it seems like you say common sense, but sometimes it doesn't always happen. Thank you. Item number six point four, Motorcycle Awareness Month in Carver County. Commissioner Workman, you want to say a few words?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. I only need about thirty minutes on this item.
We'll take a break right after.
Or three minutes. This is just, I appreciate the board's indulgent, what is now annually just a recognition in May, and when I was a lobbyist for the Motorcyclists, we had the governor usually sign, and I think they still do have him sign, a proclamation also. Motorcycles have been coming out of the garages for, probably since April or so, but we start to get warmer weather, and so we get them, and then motorcycle deaths go up. And I'm not speaking to people who ride motorcycles recklessly here, talking about the people who take the advanced rider classes, like I have, who seek to be safe and drive safe, but as you see on the sticker on a lot of vehicles around, start seeing motorcycles, because right after somebody runs into a motorcycle, they traditionally say, well, I didn't see the motorcycle. So asking people to be a little bit more aware, they do accelerate, they're smaller, they accelerate quicker, and so you kind of have to be looking. And anyway, just trying to raise the awareness on the issue, and hopefully everybody has a fun, safe motorcycle season. It is an absolute dream riding around on a motorcycle. I currently do not have one. We call that "I'm between motorcycles" for my probation officer listening, ready for the next one. But anyway, ride safe out there, the bikers will ride safe, and I'm just asking motorists in general to keep an eye on them.
You want to make that, adopt the proclamation?
I will make that.
I will second that. Any discussion on the proclamation? Hearing none? All in favor of adopting the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it again. Six point five, Advisory Committee appointments. Mr. Hempson, did you want to say anything about the advisory committees?
There's two appointments, Mr. Chair, one to the Mental Health Advisory Committee, the other two, the CDA. I would suggest you do those in separate motions.
Well, let's take the advisory, the Mental Health Advisory Committee first. Commissioner Ruderman, do you want to, since it's in your, no, it isn't, it's, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ruderman.
I would move, I'm not positive how to pronounce this, it's Heim, but Mr. Bernard Heim, to the Mental Health Advisory Committee.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that appointment? Hearing none? All in favor of appointing Mr. Heim to the Advisory, Mental Health Advisory Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And the second one is appointment to the CDA. I would push, put forward Susan Kibler, living in District Number Two, to fill in the vacancy for District One. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chair.
Any discussion on the motion to appoint Susan?
Mr. Chair, for me.
Commissioner Ruderman.
Had a couple of questions, and maybe it'll come up in a different discussion, but right now, the CDA does not have term limits, and currently, the appointment is five years. If we make an appointment today, maybe I'm looking over it, Jennifer, if we want to change that in the future, does this appointment compromise that, or can it be adjusted post-appointment?
I'm sorry, I was just pulling up the appointments, and so I missed kind of the beginning of the question.
The gist of it is, right now, there's no term limits for CDA, and the term is five years. If we wanted to adjust that, if we make an appointment today, would we be locked into that for five years, or can we make an adjustment in the future? And would it be ours to make, or would it be the CDA's to be made?
I think it would be the CDA's decision to amend their operating rules. I have to remember, by statute, does it say five years?
Administrator Hempson, do you have a comment on that?
I'm struggling to remember, also, if you look it up. I thought it was by statute.
I think it is by statute, so they probably can't adjust it, now that I've looked at that not so long ago yet. I'm just, I'm pretty sure it's set by statute, so we probably aren't changing term limits.
Yeah, unless you change the statute, and then, we just went through a process of potential removal, so you know that process, and then I'll cover more ground during the work session in terms of the change.
Well, I had those questions, because I know we're at such an important time in the history of CDA, historic approval with board support of two hundred incremental units coming our way. Need for stability, leadership results, and I can appreciate there's a candidate in your district. I think that's what's even higher of importance, is finding the best candidate, and so I just wanted to take a few minutes. There's a second candidate, Jeremy Ely, and what he wrote was, "I'm a native of Minnesota and reside in Carver County since 2010. My story begins as a child of young parents who were provided wraparound services, including housing, while they pursued their college careers to make a better life for our young family."
I mean, we didn't read all the other applicants' resumes either, so I'm not, I don't mean to cut you off, but I was cutting you off, because I don't think we need to hear his resume.
I think that it is important for the public to hear it, given the disparity in qualifications.
Disparity is a relative term.
Yeah. I just asked that this be put on the record, and I'd love to read it. I'll read the other candidates as well.
At this point, I don't think it needs to be. We didn't read other candidates' bios in the past, and as a chair, I'm just saying it, it's not necessary to read somebody that wasn't, at this point, wasn't being voted upon at this point.
Mr. Chair, if I could add, these applications are public, they're available through my office if anybody wants to see them, all these advisory committee applications.
We've had good applicants in the past. I'm not downgrading this applicant or other applicants. I'm just saying, at this point, we have Susan Kibler on the docket to be appointed if she gets the necessary votes, so.
If I may summarize, Mr. Chair, the candidate that I'm suggesting has twenty-two years of business experience, has experienced public...
We know that, and it is on record. So at this point, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of appointing Susan Kibler, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries four-to-one. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on. We'll take a five-minute break, since we are running long. We're done with our regular session, but we will reconvene as the Regional Rail Authority. So before we reconvene, we'll take a five-minute break. So at this point, we'll recess. Thank you.
Dave, they are statutory, Lisa. I just, yeah.
That's where we need Diane.
She knows right off the bat, yeah. You're on next, get that.
Statute is six seventy-two.
There it is, four six nine oh six. Remember that next time, shall we? I don't know, we'll see next time.
Usually, the advisory committee, that was the answer.
Yeah, I was like, okay, that's in our office. I got that.
Okay. You can...
Go?
I did send Diane. I'd like you, I'm reluctant to delegate, I want you to do the plan.
Go.
I just said. I'd like you. I want you to delegate. I want you to do the plan.